Thank you for being here. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the glad of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Starting off tonight's meeting with some really sad news. Mrs. Deep sadly and with deep regret that we had a recent death in our school community today. Sanford Middle School eighth grader Chase Fromer died after an almost two-year battle with DIPG, childhood cancer. So as we start the meeting, I'd probably, I'd like to request a moment of silence as we can keep Chase and his family and his friends in our thoughts. Thank you. We did send out information to our families and our staff, letting people know this is going to be really hard and difficult for some understandably. And so we do have a crisis intervention team made up of professionals that are trained to help with the needs that may come up during difficult times like this. So we did send out some information and we are going to have counselors available in our schools. So I would ask that any of our stakeholders who are having a hard time, don't hesitate to reach out to be able to have people help the best that we can through this really sad and difficult time.
Thank you, Matt. Moving on to adjustments, we do have item I one that will be postponed until next week's meeting.
Yeah, Pam Lyden, Sanford Middle School principal, was scheduled to present this evening on the opening of school at Sanford Middle School and obviously with the events, we're going to postpone that and have Pam come next week to talk about the opening for Sanford Middle School.
We don't need to vote on that. Okay.
Actually, we do.
We do.
We have to make that adjustment.
Okay. Make a motion to move item I one to next week's meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Seconded by Melissa. Appreciate it. All in favor?
All in favor.
Moving on to approval of minutes, Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, the workshop at 10:00 a.m. Monday, August 21st, we have several meetings, executive session at 4:00 p.m., executive session at 4:30 p.m., and executive session at 5:15 p.m. And then the Monday, August 21st meeting, the regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
My motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Melissa, seconded by Amy. All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you. Okay, as far as I know, we don't have everybody waiting for us on Zoom for public comments and there isn't anybody present here this evening. Moving forward to communications, we don't have any committee reports, none. We will eventually, this is our second meeting of the year, so superintendent reports.
Actually, we did, there is a communication that we did receive that I do want to acknowledge. And it kind of fits in, it's timely when you look at it, it's the beginning of the school year. But as everyone is aware, Mother Nature waited until we got back to school before they came roaring in with some very hot temperatures. I know last week was a really challenging week in terms of the weather conditions for everyone and especially for some areas in our school department. So the school committee did receive a correspondence from a middle school teacher regarding, very well-written email and concerns about really the changes that we're seeing in the weather and those impacts and wondering if we as a school department are going to be able to be making any changes or adjustments to that. And so I want to respond to that as well as all of our stakeholders to let them know that yes, this is something that we are very much looking into. We care deeply about our students and our staff and we want everyone to feel safe and comfortable. Those weather changes are not something that is, those hot temperatures are not something that is unique to Sanford. Those are happening throughout the state, throughout York County, throughout New England, throughout the country with that. And so we are going to be looking into ways to make people more comfortable. I've had good conversations with our union leadership. There are some limitations that we do have that we have to acknowledge and it's not like there's a ton of options out there, but I do feel confident that by collaborating that in addition to those strategies that we are looking at being able to already put into place, everything from cooling our rooms down the night before and opening windows and having people come in early to open those windows and water breaks and shades down and adjusting schedules and moving rooms. I do think that from where we're at, not just as this being in September, but also as we also look ahead to the spring, that these are some things that I think we're going to want to be able to look at both internally in Sanford, but I also know the superintendents that we have as well as in York County will be looking at ways that we can be able to come back and see how we can improve situations with that. As I mentioned, there may be some things that might be, we may have some limitations around that, but I also think there's things that we can do to make things better. It's hard finding that balance, right? Because we, for a lot of our people, they come to school and school's a safe place for them. They don't have opportunities to, or people available to be able to help them go home or to jump in swimming pools or things like that. And so those are some things that we need to continue to take into account, but also make sure how we can be able to adjust and be ready for situations where there might be extended heat that we have to be able to adjust and be ready to. So I'm confident after the talks and conversations that we've had that we can continue to work in that. I do want to say major kudos and a major, major thank you to our students and our staff throughout the district. I was able to get out through the district. I started many of our schools first thing in the morning to check on room temperatures and then also was able to get through other schools, the hottest parts of the day. And I saw people persevering, continuing to work hard, being together and pushing through. And so I'm very grateful, very proud to be able to see all the hard work and the effort that was going in. I know our student reps, you have it a little bit different, the conditions that you have at Sanford High School with its relatively, with its facility, it's new. You're not having some of the challenges that may be happening in other parts of the district. And even within those schools, there's certain parts of schools or certain rooms that temperatures also get elevated. So as I mentioned, it's a complex issue, but at the same time, one that we're going to be looking into to see what we can do. And in considering when you are talking about working conditions, that is something that is part of the collective bargain agreement and something that we want to be working with our unions to be able to go about and do that. And so we'll be doing that as long, as well as combining and working with both York County superintendents as well as the main state superintendents, because as I said, this is not something that is just isolated to Sanford.
Thank you. Okay, so no committee reports, superintendent reports.
Sure. Curious to, for Aiden and Emma, if they have any reports for that. I know tonight we do have Principal Doyle and Athletic Director Lemlin here to talk about the opening of school from the high school and athletic perspective, but is there anything that you folks have that you want to share as part of your student reports?
So all I wanted to share is that homecoming preparations have started. So we have about four weeks left, or four real weeks left to prepare for homecoming. So for the senior class at least, we're going to be there Tuesday and Thursday this week from 2:30 to 6:30, painting the posters for the library windows, creating our parade float, which is really exciting. But I also did want to just add that the homecoming game is scheduled to be October 13th and then the dance will be October 14th. So yeah.
I just had two things I wanted to share quickly. So first off, the National Honor Society. So today they actually emailed juniors and seniors that are eligible to apply to this organization. So there's going to be a parent night and student night on the 19th at 5:30. So that would be a great opportunity for them to learn more about what it's about. And some of the officers are going to be there explaining kind of like how you join. So that would be a good opportunity. And then also Wednesday, SHS Abroad announced that the class of 2025, their senior trip will be to France. So actually tomorrow night, there's going to be an informational meeting for the students and their parents to kind of find more about this. So yeah.
Can the National Honor Society mean, you said the 19th, is that September 19th or October 19th?
September.
September. Thank you.
And that's probably a great opportunity for any student or parent who wants to learn more about it, especially if that's something you're interested in being able to pursue. So that'd be helpful. Great, thank you. Also, just in case Aiden and Emma are lonely here as school committee reps, I want to give an update that we are looking to have a replacement for John Paul who graduated last year. So there will be a, an announcement going out to the junior class. That announcement will be going out this week. And so applications for anyone who's interested in being a student, a school committee student representative will be due on Friday, September 22nd. And so those will be due the 22nd. We'll look at initial interviews being held that following week on the 25th. And so it would be our hope to bring a candidate in front of the school committee prior to our October 2nd meeting. And that will probably be an executive session meet, prior to the meeting on October 2nd. So that's the timeline to be able to work on that coming back. As I mentioned with opening the school, really proud and impressed with the opening of school, whether the challenges of things coming our way, whether it was Mother Nature and the really hot temperatures or whether it was a bus breaking down or some of those things that just happened. I've been really impressed overall with the opening of school. Our students have really come back and done a nice job as well as our teachers and support staff and our administrators. We're off to a really good start. This is our first full week of school. We started with a couple of days where we really focused on the transition activities. We did have open houses at our three elementary schools and Sanford Middle School as well as SRTC this year prior to school beginning. That was on Tuesday, August 29th. And so those were very well attended, very pleased with the turnout. That following day, we had first day of school for students in grades one through nine, really focusing on some of those transition grades as we did that. And then on Thursday, the 31st, we brought in students, we brought in our kindergartners that day and we went K through 12 as we also brought in our high school students. And then we had a long weekend and then following the Labor Day holiday, we did start with pre-K. And so we were able to come back and navigate all of those people coming in for that. I do want to point out to people that we do have, from an enrollment perspective, our overall enrollment is up right now. When we compare what our enrollment is district-wide to our enrollment that we've reported last fall on October 1st to the Maine Department of Education. And I can pass those out this way, just so, hard to look on the screen. But we are up right now by 56 students. And so if you're able to look there, you will see what we have for attending students, both on as of last Friday, September 8th, and we're comparing that to October 1st. We've also had our new mainers come in and so we've also included an update there, as you can look at that. Those grades don't go line to line. You can see the differences by grade, but what you really want to look at was obviously the 2023 Grade One students would have been kindergarten students in Grade Two. So you can see how the classes come up to be able to move with that. You're probably asking, what does EPS attending students mean and what does EPS subsidy student? We put that in because the subsidy is what we receive from the Department of Education and from the State of Maine. And you'll see those numbers are different and you may be asking why. And the major difference for that is our Acton students. Acton receives the subsidy for their students, but we do have a private contract with them, as you know. So that's where you're going to see how that impact is different. So you'll notice that we have 106 ESOL students. And so if you go to the second page, you'll look at, I think last year that number was 56? No, I'm sorry. I don't have that. 57 is where it was in terms of our ESL students last year. And so there, if you look at that, you can also see what our subsidy count is. And then if, yeah, it was 57. 57 ESOL students last year as of October 1st. And as of September 8th, we are up to 106. So that's where you're seeing most of the differences in our student, for our increase of the 56 students. And the last page, if you want to bring that up, will show how it worked in. Our transfers in. We had 206 students transfer in and we had 119 students transfer out. And how that breaks down is the transfers in, that include 22 new students from Acton as they're coming into ninth grade and then 40 people from out of state, 14 people from out of the country, two charter schools, 24 homeschool students returning. And then we had a couple of other reentry students and then you'll see exactly also where ours went out. So as I know from a funding standpoint, we are expecting our valuation in Sanford to continue to go up. And as we know, as the valuation goes up, the double whammy would be if our enrollment was going down. But we are not and our enrollment right now is increasing. So good news there in terms of the opening of school. I'll give the, the student reps a break this evening and if you can bring any questions on the enrollment. We'll continue to update that because that's going to be an important number on October 1st. I know Assistant Superintendent Bucier will be talking about pre-K in his update. Normally we have students will be reporting out on the Sanford Spotlight. Well, this one's a little bit different considering it's more about new and coming back into the school. So you guys will get a break on this one, but you'll be ready to go on the next one. But as I mentioned, the welcome back, you can see some different pictures there from when we had all of our staff coming back on our staff in-service days. There's a pre-K picture. And then you can just see some of our elementary students as they came to school on that first day. They were greeted by cheerleaders and upperclassmen. So really cool job on what our people do to welcome people back. The next page, the Spartan Times will be coming back again. That is a, something that is the high school's online newspaper. So we want to also feature links to that so people can stay connected there. One of the first things that they're doing this year is talking about some of the changes and new faces that are happening to the school or some new faces in some new places. We also have an article in there this month about attendance. September is attendance awareness month. And so that's something that we really want to make sure that we emphasize the importance of that. Next up, Sanford in the news. Obviously Athletic Director Lemlin will be talking more later on about our athletic programs kicking off, but they've been going at it now since the middle of August. And so there's some, we're getting some publicity with some of our different people as people to watch. At our October meeting, Brett Williams, the director of the Sanford Performing Arts Center, will be coming in to formally announce in front of the school committee the 2023-2024 season for the Performing Arts Center, but we have something there. Next up, starting our employee, continuing our employee spotlights. This edition, we focus on MCS speech clinician, Jan Butler. Also, we have links in there to our school newsletters at the middle school, Margaret Chatham, Carl J. Lamb, and Sanford Pride. So you'll be able to go back and also see what, staying connected there. We really want to, especially early on, encourage people that they make sure they download the Sanford Spartan app so they don't miss any updates from us, because that's how we can push out a lot of information through Thrill Share and Aptogee. So there's some updates there. And then Jim's various announcements that we have in the community. Also for us, we're hiring. So there's a link there on a QR code for people to get connected that way. And then we're always open for any news ideas that we have. You can contact Sam Bonzi to be able to do that. And then finally, as we try to use this to connect to everything going on in Sanford, there is a connection there for the city's newsletter, the Main Street Memo, that you can be able to get connected there. And then we also have some additional links for us as well. And I do want to point out that the Sanford Springvale News is online and coming back with weekly updates. And with that, we've got connections there. I already mentioned the Spartan Times and also staying up to date with that. So that's our early one. We'll be sending that out as well. But that's the opening of school update. We will in a few minutes be having Amanda Doyle, the principal at the high school, talk about the opening of school for the high school. We'll have Zach Lemlin to talk about athletics. And then at our meeting next week, we'll have our elementary principals come in as well as Matt Peterman for SRTC, Stacy Bissel for the bridge, and Pam Lyden will be rescheduled to come back for the middle school for that. I do want to give a quick construction update. And just when you think construction is going away, it comes back. But I did want to update people on the closeout for the high school and SRTC project with that. One of the things we were looking out to close the project is we needed the contractor to provide us with the architectural as-bills. That was something that was in the agreement. That was something we hadn't received. Those are obviously an important piece. And so they were working on that in the middle of August. I did receive an update from Hutter that said it was taking them a little bit longer and they, because they wanted to make sure everything was accurate. So they did send us architectural as-bills in the middle of August. I took those and I shared those with the Department of Education, but I also shared them with our architect, because I wanted them to be able to weigh in and say, okay, is this everything that we need? And they did review that and I have communicated back to Hutter that it's improved, but it's still incomplete and it does not show all of those changes that we need. The proposal requests ASIs and associated sketches have been documented, but the RFIs were not documented through that. And so that was something that obviously we need to have this information for years from now if something does come up to be able to pop up with that. So I did reach out to them, letting them know that also in addition to the architectural, the mechanical, plumbing, and structural trades were also had some things missing. And so that was something that I pointed out to them, that we're not being difficult. Those are things that are part of the documents and are part of required of this. And so I've asked for those changes and sent that back out. And I did send that back out at the end of August with that. So that's just an update on that. I've not heard back from them as of yet. But as I mentioned, this is something that I have been communicating with the Department of Education as well as our architects and we are all united and on the same page with this. So that's the latest construction update.
Thank you. All right, directors reports. Dr. Amanda Doyle.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the school committee for the opportunity to serve as principal of SHS. I'm already seeing a benefit of a strong connection with Mr. Matt Peterman, the former principal at SRTC. I wanted to start tonight with an overview of some of our goals this year for Sanford High. In terms of achievement, Sanford High School will implement freshman teaming, using this work to develop a pilot MTSS framework for future use across all grade levels. On the climate front, this year, we will leverage relationships to improve student engagement, focusing on attendance, behavior, and substance use, including vaping. On the capacity building front, we'll continue with our Alice training for safety. Additionally, we will recommit to early release days to provide staff with professional development and leadership opportunities that will support their individual growth and also student learning. You might be aware of some of the administrative and support staff transitions that occurred this year, myself and Mr. Peterman included. Also, we're moving Erin Trembley downstairs to the main office for more of a staff-focused role, supporting teaming efforts and our staff with professional development opportunities. Mike Fallon has moved to the role of assistant principal, supporting primarily students in Grade Nine and Ten. Later this week, Mr. Watts will return from leave. He will be supporting Grades 11 and 12 students. We've also appointed Sally Quarles, formerly an English teacher at the high school, as our attendance coordinator and she's transitioning to that role very nicely. A few of these events were already referenced earlier, but I will share that our freshman tours occurred in the afternoon on August 24th. Those were really well attended. It was great to have two sessions to meet the needs of families throughout town. Lots of great questions, lots of opportunities to get inside the hallways and I think that's really exciting for our Grade Nine students. Our Grade Nine Orientation Day was the first day of school on the 30th. That allowed us the opportunity to have our students tour in sort of a calmer environment to help them become accustomed to the building. Lots of onboarding conversations were had with students, reviewing the policies, the way that things worked, and it was really a great transition opportunity. So we thank you for your support with that. First day for all of our students was on the 31st. And I was reminded today in preparation for this that this is only our sixth full day of school with all of our students. It feels like it's been six weeks, but it's been really great. On that first day, we were welcomed with some refreshments from our Spartan Parent Group, which is just an amazing reminder of how much support we have in the community. So we're all very grateful for that. In the first few days of school, we conducted class meetings with each class, which were focused on welcoming our students, introducing them to some of the new faces and faces that had shifted roles. We conducted a review of handbook highlights in both those meetings and in our Spartan Times. For the juniors, it was particularly exciting as the destination for their class trip, class of 2025, was announced and that destination is Paris. I think all the kids were very, very excited about that. Also this year, you might be aware that we have moved to a five-block schedule. We're definitely still adjusting to that, but we're very hopeful about the opportunities that a fifth block presents for students, both in terms of access to additional electives that students may choose to take, but it also creates opportunities for students who may be credit deficient to have another chance at recouping a credit. Athletics, marching band, and clubs are all off to a great start. We're really, really fortunate, this is something that I wanted to highlight, that we have so many willing and invested staff here to support those efforts. It's not difficult to get volunteers to do these things and I think that's something for me that's a huge standout being in Sanford. I'd like to touch briefly on some challenges. We definitely know this seems like it's old hat, but we know that there are ongoing impacts related to the disruption to our lives that was caused by COVID-19 restrictions. We still do experience challenges of student behavior and impacts to attendance. And while it's not unique to Sanford, and I think that's an important note, we do continue to anticipate many of the ways that this can impact our school so that we can be supportive, responsive, and ensure a safe learning environment for all of our students. I'm pleased to say that although there have been some challenges even in these first few days, as we review our processes, I'm very pleased with the response of our staff. We'll continue to be as proactive as possible while managing these dynamic scenarios, always with a mind to teach and support our students in their growth. Overall, I can't say how pleased and proud I am to be at Sanford High School, so fortunate to have the staff so fortunate to have the staff that we have, to have the support of our families and students like Emma and Aiden, who are really invested in making the most of the learning opportunities we provide. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Amanda. I also want to reiterate how impressed I am, too. I think there's been people stepping up. I know with Assistant Principal Watts being out at the beginning of the year, that has been challenging. But kudos to everyone who's been able to kind of step up with some of those changes, to be able to step in. I, too, could not be more pleased and proud of the work that's going on at Sanford High School. So I think we're off to a great start. Any questions or comments from the school committee? Amanda, we can't let you run away with that. There might be something that other people, any questions, comments, concerns from anybody?
No, it's just exciting to hear how excited all of you are to start the year. And we just appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, now you can leave, all right. We'll ask you to also maybe hang around a little bit, because we'll have Zach come up and be able to talk about kicking off the athletic season, about that, and also probably, as Aiden highlighted a little bit, homecoming and some of the thoughts around homecoming and maybe some changes.
Hi, guys. Great to see all of you. Hope you guys have had a terrific summer, as I and my family did as well. And it was a terrific summer for the athletic department as well. I was able to find some time off, but I don't think that there was a lot of teams or student athletes this summer who took time off. So it was great to have a busy school, kids working out, doing sports performance center training every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, excuse me, Wednesday and Friday, and then using the weight room. Summer basketball, summer field hockey, I mean, you name it. Kids were in all summer long, which was, which was awesome. It's cool for that. As we get started, you know, here are the numbers for, for the high school. Very, very happy with, with where the numbers are for, for this upcoming school year. I don't want to read them all to you guys, because I think that you guys can see them on the board. The number that stands out for me is having 253 high school athletes this year, nine through 12, which is a 6% increase from last year. I would pretend that I'm even, you know, closely related to numbers and all those things, but I just taught social studies. So I know that when it goes up in a percentage, that's, that's usually pretty good. I know due to the heat and everything last week that we all experienced, unfortunately, the middle school did not get a chance to get their middle school athletics kickstarted. So they're going to get started this week. They're going to make quick work of it, because, you know, there's games and the rest of the leagues are getting ready to get started later in this week. So I know those kids are itching and clawing to, to get themselves out on the field. And I know they beat the rain today. So it was great to have all those middle schoolers out participating as well. So fall sports for the high school started on August 14th and really should have been 9:05, but, but this week is, is where it is. And I know I always share that we'll have over 85 home events. If any of you guys want to, you know, come down and check something out, and I know some of you will be there, I'll see you anyways, but always welcome to come down. We, for the most part, have all of our outdoor events for the high school on Alumni Stadium, or they're going to be in the gym for volleyball. And then for the middle school, it's going to be down at Blown and Cobb. So pretty fortunate for the facilities we have and, and the Parks and Rec, who do an amazing job of taking care of those things to, to always have what I think some of the best facilities for that. So lots of positive energy on campus and super excited about how things have gotten started. I know there was probably a lot of people, and I certainly had to, at nauseam, explain the heat index chart to a lot of people last week. And, and I, I think Sanford's a really unique spot. And my wife calls me a little weird, because I love the heat, and she probably thinks I'm a little weird for it. But last week was probably a little too hot. And so we follow the NFHS, the National Federation of State High School Associations Guidelines. And that's something that the Maine Principal Association and the NFHS send out to everybody. We were lucky enough to receive last year what's called a WET bulb. And you can see the acronym up there, WBGT. And, and that takes into account temperature, humidity, wind speed, sun angle, cloud cover, the, the whole thing, to be able to get a, a true reading as to what the real feel is outside. That way, we can keep the health and wellness of, of all of our student athletes, you know, at the front of our, our brains as we're trying to make decisions about, about the heat. Any outside activity between the, the temperatures of 82 and 92 have guidelines that are related to them as to what can, what can happen, what some of those restrictions are. And anything below 82, there's no real restrictions. So we certainly paid a lot of attention to those last week. I'm sure there was a lot of upset kids and, and potential parents that we weren't able to do stuff. Many schools, you know, around us, especially inland, is, as we have the joy of being in Sanford, I always think we're the hottest, and I always think we're the coldest. And then there's times where we're the snowiest. It, it seems to be a little bit weird at that at some times. So I would communicate as much as I could with other athletic directors. And I know Mass B6 certainly experienced some of those issues as well last week from preventing a lot of us to, to hold games and practices. On the next slide, this is the picture that we have, that is what we follow. You can see on the bottom part there, really that, that sweet spot, really, that you want to try to stay is below 82. 82 through 86 puts us in a, in a decent spot. And then obviously, as it goes down, it, it climbs kind of the ladder for, for what you're able to do. And unfortunately, most of all of last week, we spent over 92 degrees, which didn't leave us any opportunity to get outside until that real feel dropped. You know, that was one of the best things that we kind of had as a protocol in place to, to make sure we're keeping our student athletes safe and, and not having any heat-related illnesses. The next one, Sarah. So this was last week. Using our WET bulb, we're able to, to get graphics directly sent to our athletic trainer's phone. And these were two that we were trying to make decisions about, hey, are we going to have, we're going to have games tonight or not? Are we going to be able to get kids outside? And you can see each one of these are at 2 o'clock, and, and the temperature's 101, and the heat index was 123 degrees. That was on our, on our turf at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Probably not a good decision to, to do that. And there, as there are a lot of kids who are upset with that, it's easy to kind of share this data and say, hey, it's, it's truly unsafe for, for you to get out there. Always want to have their health and wellness at the, at the forefront as we're moving forward with that. So certainly, you know, not over the, the heat. I, I'm sure it's going to come back at some point, but knowing that we have that protocol in place is going to help us make the right decisions going forward. Upcoming events as, as we get forward into the fall, we're having an SSYA or SMIFL night on this coming Friday for South Portland. Super excited about having all those guys there. I know they get super jacked up to be able to run through the tunnel and lead the football team out. It'll be, it'll be a cool night for that. I know Aiden touched on homecoming. Homecoming will be that Monday of Indigenous Peoples' Day through the 14th. There's the events up there. We have that week with boys soccer on Monday, field hockey on Tuesday, 10:10, girls soccer on Wednesday, volleyball Thursday. And then we have football, a football game on that Friday night with the dance being on Saturday. I know it becomes kind of a pretty big experience in Sanford. So I'm super excited that the parade is coming back. You know, I think there's a lot of people in the community who are super excited about that. I know my boys will be excited to come down and, and check out everything that'll be there for that. But that's not just about me. We are hosting the Second Sevens, which is the, kind of the last chance qualifier for our cross-country athletes, student athletes in the SMAAs. So they're going to get to come to Sanford this year on, on Saturday, 10:14, have the opportunity to run our course. Our course has been absolutely mind-blowing right now for, for how great it is. They spend a ton of time and a ton of work on it this year that student athletes right now, and even people from the public are just absolutely raving about the work that, that was done on it. So I'm super, super excited. Probably wouldn't help me run any faster, but the kids enjoy it. And then we're excited to, once again, be hosting the SMA Sportsmanship Summit on, on Tuesday, 12:05. So we're getting a little bit ahead on that. But started to ask, you know, teachers and people in the building for help preparing for that event. Our 17 schools, SMA member schools, will, will send, give or take, about 10 to 15 kids to an opportunity to, to be there for leadership and work on sportsmanship. We're putting together the list of guest speakers, you know, for that event. It's a great day, and, and it was really, really cool to be able to host that last year and, and see kind of the kids walk in and go, wow, like, this is where you guys get to go to high school every single day. So it's, that's pretty cool for us and certainly happy to, to show that off every year. Super excited about the opportunity to potentially host regional championship stuff this fall. The NPA is trying to figure out where they're going to go with stuff. I know that Kenny Monk is new turf and their facilities and everything. So I know they're pushing to, to get quite a bit of that stuff. But I've put in the plug that Sanford would love to host any of those events if we get the opportunity to. It's, it's pretty cool to have that on campus and have a, you know, relatively high-level game for, for us and our community. And the last thing that, one of the last things we have is the apps. And I know this kind of becomes the same thing that we share each year. But we have Huddle and Huddle Focus, which is a, a service that we pay for, that we can live stream all of our events on Alumni Stadium, as well as in the gym. So our volleyball games, our basketball games, you can get all that stuff through WSSR TV. It's absolutely amazing to have that. It's, you know, plenty of times where you can just kind of check in on something for, for a little bit. And then our, our school app, which is the two pictures to the, to the right hand, right and left-hand side. I encourage all the parents to do that. I, I shared that when we had our fall parent meeting. It's amazing in that it has up-to-the-minute, you know, practices. If, if something changes, something tweaks, especially with the weather last week, it was great that you can get a notification for that. Or if you're traveling, you know, with the football team to Dover High School and you're not quite sure where you're going, it's pretty great that it has the location in there. It can give you directions, which is, which is awesome, contact phone number, all those things. So certainly excited to have that and encouraging a lot of people do that. On social media, we're, our online presence is growing, which is great. Been able to post a lot of game-day graphics, a lot of final score updates on Instagram and Twitter. Things are, things are great. And I know that I've communicated with Sam Bonzi about doing some get-to-know yous for some of our student athletes. And we know how many of our students enjoy social media, so might as well join them in some of that sense and hopefully control some of the narrative and, and highlight a lot of the positives that we have going on. The last thing that, that I have, and I'm super excited about doing again, is Leadership Council. So we're going to do it again in the fall, winter, and spring. I'm pretty happy to say that we had 27 athletes show up last week for Leadership Council. And so those are selected by their, by their teammates or by the coaches to meet with me every Wednesday, you know, about 1:20 to maybe 1:50, 2 o'clock, kind of check in to see how things are going, you know, anything that they wanted to share. And like I share with them all the time, this is really the only opportunity, they all get to be in the same room to, to hear about what's going on from one program to another. And, and it's kind of eye-opening for some of the, you know, student athletes to hear, you know, especially, it, it always blows their mind when they think about the cheer team, who spends all fall preparing cheers and sideline cheers and, and don't ever compete. And it, you know, some of the kids go, wow, I can't believe you didn't do that. It's good to kind of have that grounding effect for some of them, where you can have any number of teams that can play two, three, four times in a week. And it, it's good to, to kind of get all those, those guys in the same room. And I appreciate kind of still being able to keep my teacher hat on and talk about leadership and sportsmanship and, and having that connection with them.
Any questions for Zach? Do you want to, when you mentioned homecoming and the parade, it's not, it's, there's going to be, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, but there's going to be some changes to that, right? It's not what the parade used to be?
Correct, yeah. So it's, it's not going to be the same that it'd been for a long time, obviously, in front of Memorial Gym. Have to give credit to Student Council President, and I think he's taken over some of the role of pep club, Nate Smith, and the Student Council have put in a ton of work to make it fit, because I think there was a push from students and from the community to have that come back. So I know that they're planning to do that right on Alumni Boulevard, which I think is super cool that you get on campus. And hopefully, people will stay on campus and stay there for the football game that night. But it's going to be a relatively safe thing. It's, you know, not on, you know, Main Street where you need to have constant eyes. It'll be really cool that we can close down the street. And we're going to start over by the tennis courts, and they're going to come all the way down in front of the school and, and finish down by the varsity softball field, where they'll be able to break their floats down, and, and people will get back into traffic and things from there. So super excited to see how that's going to look this year. I think it'll have a whole different feel to it, being on campus. But I'm really excited. And, and, you know, the work that Student Council and Nate Smith have done is, is really going to pay off. And just hoping for a nice weather night and to have, you know, not like last week or like it is right now outside for, for those days.
Amy, did you want to?
The time for the homecoming parade, is it typically four? Is it earlier?
I think, and Amanda, we were looking at that because, Aiden, do you know? No? Okay.
I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure that we start prepping the floats at three, and the parade starts at four.
Okay.
I think that's what it is, because I know we were having a, a lot of conversations about getting all the buses off campus to, to then start. So I think that's what you're right, and I think that's what Mr. Doyle said as well.
And just to reiterate kind of what you had said earlier, just when I, you know, my oldest was a freshman, I didn't really know what this was all about. So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, just for the millions that are watching, just that, like, the senior class officers sort of decide when they're going to prep for their float, and then the junior class officers will do the same for them. And the freshmen don't have class officers yet, but they will be shortly, I think. And then they'll decide when they're getting their float sort of together and their homecoming banner and all that, correct? Okay, perfect. Because we got yours saying the seniors, we're going to be doing it, but we don't know when the other ones are. So ask your kids, basically. And if they don't know, they can ask them to ask, it's cool.
That's probably a privilege that the seniors get, that they're usually, they get the head start on this on the know, yeah. And one of the other, and I don't, one of the other traditions I've always been impressed with is usually there's a pep rally also that happens, I think, later in the week, probably prior to the, and that has always been such a, a great event. The, in doing that, but I also think, where was I going with this, with the pep rally? There's, oh, I know where I was going with it. I think the seniors usually like to put together a, a dance. That's one of the traditions for that, is that, can we, can we?
It is happening. So the playlist is put together, and so two people are just putting, are just planning the dance. And then they're going to start posting the practice times on our class Instagram.
Sure, so, yeah, that's, it's usually pretty impressive, and it usually just doesn't happen. There's a lot of work behind the scenes. So that's usually part of the pep rally, is the seniors are also able to show us their moves.
Like Mick Jagger.
Well, that's exciting. Lots of good stuff happening. Thank you so much. Oh, sorry, Jen.
I just wanted to make a suggestion for the parade. I'm really excited to see the parade on campus. And, you know, getting that community reach, you know, anytime we can reach the community and draw them into that campus, I feel like is a way for us to say thank you for, you know, supporting this initiative as a community. So I'd love to see like a little PSA campaign out there about the changes and the parade and like a formal invitation to the community to come to the parade. Maybe we can pull out some old alumni pics of the parades. And, you know, I feel like that could be like really fun is to, you know, it's like being resurrected, you know, and like get the community super jazzed up. And I feel like it's just a great way to say thank you to the community for giving us this beautiful.
Nope, totally agree. And I know that, you know, I know Mr. Smith has planned a lot of those graphics and different things to go out. And he, I was kind of waiting to, to get through the sixth day of school of sorts. And I know that information is, he is very, very excited about getting this stuff out as, to the public as much as possible, because having the community there is really what it's all about. So super excited.
And Sarah, if you can mark your calendar as well, anything that? Okay, oh, all right, sorry. Because anything we can also get on there is, for video for that also, I think, would be, would be good.
I also think that the community will be very happy to know that it's coming back, that we do listen and we do pay attention, and that we do want to give back and just have them be part of everything that is just our wonderful school district.
I mean, many of us are alumni, so I think I'm also just as excited for.
I'm pretty sure Amy has a whole photo album of parade pictures.
Sure do. I actually have like four years, so don't problem I have.
So if you need any, I'll throw those out.
An alumni float, is that what I'm hearing? You guys are going to get in this year?
Maybe Sam, maybe Sam can do a Throwback Thursday or something like that.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach. Nice job. Appreciate all the work you and your team are doing. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Good evening. The first update I have tonight is about pre-K. Back on August 29th and August 30th, our pre-K staff welcomed families in for pre-K screening. As part of the screening process, students are led through a variety of tasks to assess their motor skills, concept knowledge, and language skills. In addition, families are asked to complete a questionnaire, and they talk with the teacher to share strengths that their child may have and any concerns that they may have as well. Screening is part of our child fine obligation under the main state special education regulations to look for students that may have a potential to disability. And so that is a requirement. After doing the screening, if there's any child we have concerns about, we refer them on over to CDS, Child Developmental Services for Evaluation. Remember, our pre-K program, special education services are delivered through CDS. And so that's who we work through. Following Tuesday, on September 5th, we welcome 92 little ones into our pre-K program. Currently, we do have four slots that are open for a variety of reasons. And Ann Laura, the central office, and I have been working to fill those slots. And we are hopeful that we're going to be able to fill those. Once we've gone through those names, we will have a very small waitlist with one or two folks that, for a variety of reasons, they are native, are not able to provide transportation to the school because it's out of district. But we're hopeful we can fill them all. So overall, pre-K is going well. In terms of transportation, the goal at the beginning of the year is to get students home safely and on the correct bus. And we did a great job with that. We have experienced some challenges over the past two weeks with construction on Route 4, with construction on River Street. That has been a real challenge that has impacted our timing. And as well as Mr. Nelson mentioned earlier, we had a mechanical issue with the bus, a late call out with a driver. So we've had our challenges, but as we move into the second or the first full week of school, we're gonna continue to refine our routes to support better timing for families. In terms of athletic transportation, the fall is a busy time, and Ledgmere is meeting all of our needs in-house, which is really good to hear. They do have three trip drivers currently on staff. So those are three drivers that are designated just for athletics. And so they're doing great with that. They continue to advertise, hire and train drivers to join their team. The hope is to eventually get the three buses that are out of service, in service, when they can get drivers to fill those seats. As I mentioned in our August meeting, we will be releasing our bid for transportation at the end of September in hopes to get that completed by the budget season in November. As Mr. Nelson mentioned earlier, we did welcome 106 ESOL students to our classrooms and to our schools these past couple of weeks. I'd like to thank our community members and staff who supported this transition. I think one of my biggest fears, or school dreams if you have them, nightmares, is that we've tried to communicate the bus information to families and no one arrives. But the good news was, our new mainers, the majority of them arrive to school on time on the correct bus. So that in itself was an accomplishment. To prepare staff for our ESOL students, we did provide them with some professional development during our second teacher workshop day. We had pre-K through four staff participate in professional development in the morning in the pack, M5 through 12 in the afternoon, where they learned about the PSYOP model. The PSYOP is an instructional model or framework that supports all students' academic and language needs, not just our ESOL students. We also provided professional development for our school counselors, social work outreach and nurses, nurses in regards to multicultural awareness. I'd like to thank the Department of Ed, who, the main department, who came down and facilitated that professional development session. So we're very thankful to them. And last week during the ERD, they came back and spent time with the Margaret Chase Smith School staff with that. The professional development we provided for staff is just the beginning. This is gonna be a long journey, a long process that we're gonna need to continue to provide support to staff, because this is not gonna be easy. And we know that. And so this is not gonna be a one and done, but ongoing support. In terms of what's different this year for instruction for our ESOL students, those students that are new to the English language, we are providing direct instruction in English language learning in a pull-out model, where they will have a class with our ESOL certified staff to help them with that. But keep in mind, as I mentioned last week in August, also embedded with that direct instruction of English language is also time within the mainstream. It's important that they're with their peers, experiencing the general A curriculum in the general A classrooms. So we're on our way. The schedules are complete. And to my knowledge, they started that instruction today at the elementary level and the middle school and the high school, they'd already been, been at it as of last week. Moving forward, when we think about ESOL services, when we think about our new mainers, I think you're gonna hear me talk about the theme of communication. And communicating with our families in, it's new for us in terms of the intensity. And so using our online service, pick up the phone, you call, we call language line, an interpreter picks up the phone, and we're able to talk with the families. Our administrative assistants in our front offices have had to get used to using that system, our administrators, school counselors. So it's a learning process for us, but I think it's been effective. In-person translators, when we had our kindergarten screening a couple of weeks ago, we needed to hire interpreters to come in to spend some time with families to help them through that process. Texting app, classroom teachers being connected to these families through talking points, where they're able to send a message to the family that translates it for the family, and the family is able to send us a message back, so we can understand that and, and communicate with one another. And then document translation, we're running into concerns where we need to translate documents for families. I'll give you an example of the dental ferries to tooth protectors. And so that's, that's a form. We provide that service. We wanted to offer it to our ESOL families. We need to have that translated. And it's not something we can translate through Google Translate. We need a more formal, professional looking translation. So these are all things that we're working through. It's all good work. It's important work. But I just bring that up because it's something we're gonna continue to work on and to help staff be comfortable, so it becomes automatic, automatic for us. I'm super proud of the work our staff is doing with all kids, with these families. And Ledgmere has been fantastic. Friday afternoon, we had our pre-K driver at the SRTC pre-K program called out sick very last minute. And so we had to arrange to have those kids divided into four different buses. And so I, I went down, and I think Beth and we all went down, because it was last minute. And I walked the kids to the bus. And the drivers, it was hot. It had been a hot week, but they had smiles on their faces. They, they greeted kids. They, they, they were just fantastic. And just one example of the good work they're doing. So the last thing I'd mention, it's not on the agenda, but I just want to mention that we are continuing to look for substitutes. I have some interviews scheduled for Thursday. We have a posting on School Spring. We are in desperate need of nursing substitutes. So if you know anybody that's a full-time nurse looking for work, we would appreciate them joining our team. I'll open it up for questions.
Steve, I'll just start with comments. Reed Ray, I'm also very proud, proud of the work that you've done overseeing this with our team. I was able to go to some of that professional development that we had, both at the elementary level as well as the secondary level. And I was really impressed with that work. But as I go around and see all the coordination, it's incredibly challenging. But I'm also proud of the work that we've been able to do. It's, there, there's some hiccups and some bumps along the way for sure. But I think at the, the work that we're doing, and when we take a step back and look at that, kudos to you and kudos to our team and, and kudos to our students and families, as well as our, our staff for all being able to work together to do that.
I just wanted to give a shout out, Steve, to you as well, as well as Ledgmere, as well as our building teams. You know, we, we plan for the worst, right? And hope that we don't ever have to use those plans. And last Wednesday, there was a student in who their family did not get the PSA about early release. And I happened to be in emergency contact for that family, and it was flawless. You know, MCS called me, I called dad, the bus did exactly what they needed to do. They did not drop this kindergartner off at the bus stop unattended. And, you know, I got over to MCS with dad, picked up the child, staff was there. You know, as the, as the child went back to MCS, the tears were coming, you know, and the staff was there to comfort this child until I could get there with dad. And, you know, when we arrived, it was a smooth transition and handoff. And so just knowing that we have emergency plans in place and, you know, sadly, we had to execute it. But sometimes executing it, you know, solidifies that you have a good plan. And, you know, I, I can say confidently in that circumstance, you know, we have a good plan. And it worked, and every piece that was supposed to work, worked well. So, kudos to you guys.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to new business. Sanford School's Legacy Foundation donations received from Gerard and Gertrude Janest Gift Fund. Matt?
Sure. So very exciting news here that we received two donations through the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation. And they were donations from, as Paul just mentioned, Gerard and Gertrude Janest Gift Fund. And those donations are for the following projects. The first one is a donation to the Sanford Performing Arts Center, and that's dedicated towards lighting and other capital needs. And that's in the amount of $25,000. Brett Williams, our Performing Arts Center Director, will be working with the Sanford Performing Arts Center Advisory Committee to determine the use of these funds. And the SPAC will continue to recognize the Janest Foundation for all that they have done, not only in this situation, but for all of the Performing Arts Center. If you remember, when we were building the Performing Arts Center, there was some value engineering that had to come out of the project. And so one of the things that we did was we very much wanted to still keep the foundation and the framework in place, allowing that if and when there were opportunities for us to be able, similar to this one, where we could come in and add, it would be easy to do that. And so that is, in this particular situation, is gonna fulfill a big need for that and looking at that. So very, very grateful for that. And then the second donation is noted for the Carl J. Lamb Playground Equipment. And that is in the amount of $50,000. And so this too is gonna come back and really be a real big help, because what we've been able to do with Carl J. Lamb, we've had the PTA there for Carl J. Lamb for many, many years, has been raising funds to be able to come back to, for this playground. And so we do have the PTA through the funds that they've raised, as well as some of the school department bond funds that we had, are able to put in a playground upgrade for equipment that will be happening this fall. And so what that one is, is we will, coming up this month, we just had a meeting last Friday, where we're gonna be doing the drainage in that playground. So there's gonna be, all the drainage work is gonna be done in the next few weeks. That's gonna be done in a safe way, as we're able to kind of navigate that work while school is in session. There is a Carl J. Lamb PTA meeting this Thursday. And then we're gonna be looking to also see what we can get for volunteers, because the equipment that we have, that they've worked with the school to purchase is coming in to be delivered, and the install is planned for October 5th and 6th. And so that's exciting. But this donation from the Gerard and Gertrude Janest Gift Fund is now additional money that is going to take that particular piece of equipment that we're, and add on to it in ways that are now really gonna put the Carl J. Lamb Playground really on equal footing, if not more, than our other elementary schools who are able to come back and be able to get those upgrades. So that's really exciting. As you know, we have added pre-K to our elementary schools. And so that was something that we were able to be able to accommodate in our other elementaries. So those are things that, that's exciting with this donation, to be able to do that. So exciting time for sure. I know some of the people in the room here on the school committee have worked very hard with the PTAs on a lot of different fundraisers at Carl J. Lamb to be able to get that. So to be able to work it all these different ways, that's pretty exciting. And I'm pretty proud of that, for that. So the recommendation here is to approve the acceptance of the donations from the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation on behalf of the Gerard and Gertrude Janest Gift Fund.
I'll make that motion. Kelly makes the motion.
I would love to second.
Amy seconds that motion. All in favor?
All in favor.
And I would just like to add a great big thank you to the Janest Foundation for these donations. Very, very grateful.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been a long time coming. And this just.
A long time coming for that.
Makes it happen.
Thirty-plus-year-old piece of equipment at Carl Lamb since the beginning of time is now going to be retired.
Yep.
So thank you.
Okay, no old business to discuss. Next is resignations and retirements.
Sure. So these are all resignations, a variety of different positions there. Magnus Lewis had a job change and, or change in work conditions enough that he would not be able to continue with JV girls soccer. Zach Robinson, a bridge teacher, that was something that we knew about, that just didn't become official until in August. Megan Gillis, an art teacher, moving to another school in New York County closer to home for mainly childcare reasons. Jessica Garnow, special education ed tech two. Paul Peck is a first-shift custodian. Paul's gonna be working out and helping with the plumbing program at SRTC. You'll see that coming up shortly. Beth Pendley is a special ed ed tech two. Kitchen personnel at Sanford Pride, Christine DeSimino. Gerard Hill, varsity volleyball coach. And three second shift custodians, Bud Turner, Darrell LaJoy and Jeff Bowden. Jeff is heading back to Pennsylvania to be closer to family. So those are resignations I'd like to announce. I do have some appointments that I'd also want to announce. Ashley Decore is an ed tech two at Carl J. Lamb. Jody Sinko is a full-time second shift custodian. That's working at, over at Willard at Community Adult Ed and Bridge, but also at Central Office. Gary Artgard, ed tech three for Bridge. Elizabeth Purdy, ed tech two, the self-contained for grades one and two at Sanford Pride. Danielle Turman, ed tech two at Carl J. Lamb. Taylor Tarr, JV girls soccer coach. James Bennett, an ed tech at SRTC with Esser Funds. Kelly Cole, ed tech two in the SEAL Program at Sanford Middle School. Pat Anson will be doing a substitute for us. Amy Green Lamb is a co-department chair for the Special Ed Department at Sanford Middle School. Dennis Ball, ed tech two, self-contained at the middle school. Sam Farley is a long-term substitute resource room teacher at the middle school. Penny Christie, middle school cross-country coach. And Ryan Gary, JV volleyball coach. Also have some transfers to announce in the food service, from a temporary assignment at MCS to an original personnel position at the middle school is Rene Bernier. Angel Semenow moving from an Esser art teacher to the art teacher at the high school to replace Megan Gillis. Julie Sibley from an ed tech two at SRTC, moving to an ed tech three at SRTC for that. Amy Demers, ed tech two at Carl J. Lamb to an ed tech three, long-term substitute for Carl J. Lamb. Kevin Hill moving from the JV volleyball coach, the varsity volleyball coach. Sierra Goodwin is from a ed tech two at the bridge to an ed tech three at the bridge. And Lacey Vaccaro in the kitchen at Sanford Pride, moving from four and a half hours to five and a half hours a week. And then finally, some nominations that we need to take action on, school committee needs to take action on. Nominating Tim Legere is a fourth grade teacher at MCS. Tim comes to us with a lot of experience, over 30 years of teaching experience. So very pleased to be able to be welcoming Tim to MCS. Andrew Dumont, long-term STEM substitute teacher over at Sanford Middle School. William Messer, a bridge social worker. Jamie Lovejoy is the health teacher at Margaret Chase Smith School. Elizabeth Mulcahy is the IEP coordinator at MCS. You'll notice she has a to-be-determined start date. She's coming to us from New Hampshire, so we're working with the New Hampshire School District on her release. And we're hoping to be able to get that done sometime, probably by the middle of October is what that is looking at for that. Hannah Grant is a grade one. Hannah Grant is a grade 1 classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Paul Peck, Plumbing Instructor, SRTC. John Tibbetts is going to be a MLL teacher for Community Adult Ed. Luke Hadley as an art teacher in the Esser position at Sanford High School, and then Community Adult Ed, another one for them, with David Perkins doing the online chemistry teacher. So I would ask that we recommend accepting the nominated professional staff as presented with the one-year probationary contract.
I'll make that recommendation.
Okay, Kelly makes the first recommendation, I mean, motion?
All second.
All right, Melissa seconded it, all in favor? All in favor. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, policies and procedures, none to talk about tonight. Items for future agendas, none. Calendar announcements?
Sure, just to back up policy, we had a policy committee meeting this morning, so we did talk about the cell phone policy, that's something we're reviewing, that's also on the agenda for this week's administrative team meeting, as well as we are now moving into the Section B policies for updates, so you'll be seeing some of those coming in, I think, Steve, are we going to have them for next week's agenda, or is it October? Yep, I think we'll have something next week for that, as we look at it. Calendar announcements, I already mentioned the policy committee earlier today, we also had a curriculum meeting as well, and a safety committee meeting today, busy day today. Tomorrow, our Tobacco and Vape Task Force, that meeting will be taking place tomorrow, that's at 2:45, and that's down at Sanford High School. And then we also have a stipend advisory committee meeting, that is, the initial meeting will be taking place next Monday, we'll do that at 3 o'clock prior to some executive sessions and the school committee meeting. Next Monday also, at 3:30, there's a wellness committee meeting. We do have another school committee meeting next Monday, the 18th, that begins at 6:00. I do also expect to have some executive session disciplinary hearings, one at 4:30 and one at 5:15 prior to that meeting. And then the next policy committee meeting will be on Monday, September 25th. Our Special Education Advisory Committee's next meeting is on Monday, the 25th, I got to look at that time with that, just to confirm that, I think it, that conflicts with the time that I'd given out previously, so I'll be doing my best just to make sure we can confirm that, that that will be happening on Monday, the 25th. Our next, and then we'll have a school committee meeting, our first one in October, is on Monday, October 2nd. We do have an in-service day on Friday, October 6th, 6th, as part of the Indigenous People Holiday Weekend. And then we do have a school committee meeting on Monday, October 16th, I expect that to be a workshop, and then the other thing we're looking to do is do another school committee workshop, and we're looking at Wednesday, October 4th, 7:30 in the morning to 9:30. That was something I think is, we were meeting to try to find calendar times that work for everyone, that seems to be able to work. So those are some calendar announcements.
Just, just to confirm, so the in-service day on Friday, October 6th, there is no school that day?
Correct, no school for students, but that is a day for our teachers, no school that day for Ed Techs either, but there is for our teachers, and we will be, that's part of our focus on, our administrative team this meeting is continuing our planning for that, around making sure we're meeting the professional development for our school goals, so I think you'll probably see along the line, you'll be getting an update on that from Beth Lambert, our curriculum director, about the plans for that day, because that's pretty exciting.
Does anybody have anything they want to, last minute? No? Okay, I'm making a recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 7:14, 15, 7:15.
I'll make that recommendation.
Thank you, Kelly, seconded by Melissa. All in favor? All in favor. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.